We're still waiting confirmation about calling live.
On my screen, it said you were live.
It's not yet. Oh, we are now. Welcome to the April 12th joint meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights, Cleveland Heights City Council, University Heights City Council, and Cleveland Heights University Heights Public Library. Because of school board policies, Mr. Gainer, would you please call the roll for the school board?
Ms. Wright. Mr. Podge.
Here.
Mr. Nice.
Here.
Ms. Spring.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Welcome, everybody. Liz, I believe you're the host for the meeting tonight. Would you mute everybody? There are a phone that is on. Can you just mute that for us?
Yes, give me one second. That's I haven't done that in a minute.
Thank you. I'm going to ask everybody to make sure that their microphones are muted. And when you want to speak, either use your raise your hand, or please be free to interrupt if you think it's appropriate. But we really do need to keep everybody's microphones off at this time. I would like to welcome everybody. I would also like to give everybody the opportunity for just a very, very short introduction. What I'm going to do is I'm going to just sort of call a name. And if you've got a minute, just introduce yourself and say hello. And we can go from there. Starting with University Heights Council, Mayor Brennan.
Good evening, Mayor Michael Dylan Brennan, City of University Heights. Good to be here. Good to see all of you this evening.
Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss.
Hi, everyone. It's great to be here.
Sandra Berry. Sandra Berry, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Susanna O'Neil coming through the phone because I don't have a Gmail account.
Well, I'm sorry about that.
Hello, this is Sandra Berry.
Hi, Sandra.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good.
We're going through introductions right now. And Sandra, would you say hello and introduce yourself?
Sandra Berry, University Heights Council.
Thank you. Barbara Blank Blankfield.
Good evening, everyone. Barbara Blankfield, Councilmember for City of University Heights. Great to be here this evening.
Philip Bartle. I don't believe Philip is with us this evening. Justin Gould. Sue Partey.
Oh, my apologies. I was on mute as I said that. Anyway, just saying hello to everyone. Thanks so much for the opportunity. Justin Gould, University Height City Council. I remember when last we had this meeting, I don't think it occurred last year because of the pandemic, but the one before that I was attending from the back of the room. So grateful to be here with you this evening. Thanks all.
And you're out in the sun tonight.
Golden hour, have to take advantage of it.
Susan Partey.
Councilmember Party couldn't join us this evening. She has family obligation, but she sends her regrets and and good wishes.
John Rock.
Hi, everybody. John Rock with University Heights City Council.
Mayor Jason Stein.
Hi, Jason Stein. Good to be here.
Khalil Sarin.
I am here. Thank you for having us.
Craig Cobb. Mary Dunbar.
Mary Dunbar, Member of City Council, former president of the Fairfax VTA. And I'm wearing the shirt you guys gave me for Tiger Nation. Thank you very much. It's not quite a t-shirt rather than yet, but it's the right time to wear.
I totally agree with you. Mellie Hart. I thought I saw Melody here. Are you on mute?
Sorry, I was on mute. Melody Hart, Councilwoman for Cleveland Heights.
Davida Russell.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Davida Russell. I am the newly elected Councilwoman for Cleveland Heights. And thank you for having me. This is my first time for the joint meeting. So I will find this very interesting. Thank you.
Michael Unger.
Hi, everybody. Mike Unger. Nice to see you all. Thanks for having me.
Let's go with the library board here. Nancy Levin. And I know you're there, Nancy. You're on mute. Dana Full-Elon.
Good evening, everyone. So good to see everyone. I thoroughly enjoy when we do the joint meeting with Shaker. So good to see the board. And Ms. Kirby, Superintendent, since my kids have now graduated, thumbs up. My kids both have straight A's in college right now. So give Cleveland Heights a little shout out. Hope it hope it holds through final.
Gabe Crenshaw.
Good evening, Gabe Crenshaw with the Heights Library Board.
Max Gerbach.
Hi, everybody. Great to see you. Max Gerbach, Library Board.
Vikas, I can't do justice to your last name. Can you pronounce it for me?
Yeah, it's Vikas Tarakia. I'm glad to be here.
Annette. And same, I'm not going to be able to pronounce your last name. And I'm sorry about that.
So that's all right. Annette Yamoto on the library board. Happy to be here.
Patty Carlisle.
Hi, I've worked with a lot of you guys. I'm excited to see your faces. So I'm really happy to be here.
Tyler McHugh.
Yep, Tyler McTagg here. Nice to see all of you. I'm the newly appointed member to the board, just appointed in December of this past year.
Excellent. Molly Lewis, our Vice President on the school board.
Hello, it's good to see everybody this evening. And I'm glad that we're having a joint meeting once again.
Beverly Wright, I don't see has logged in yet. Dan Hines.
Good evening, everyone. It is good to see you all. I actually really look forward to these meetings as well. It's nice to compare notes and to sort of talk about the larger community. So thank you all for dedicating your time here tonight.
And Jodi Serini.
Hi, everyone. Jodi Serini, I'm on the school board and thank you for being with us tonight. And I too enjoy these meetings quite a bit. It's nice to find out what's going on from everyone all at once.
So I see Craig Cobb has logged in since we got started on introductions. Do you want to say hello?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Had some difficulty figuring out this technology. Glad to see everyone again and looking forward to joint meeting.
Did I miss anybody else that had logged in? And they didn't hear their name called?
Debbie Herman, the fiscal officer of the library is also here.
Hello, Debbie.
And Jim.
We have our Superintendent Liz Kirby and Scott Gainer, our treasurer, also here. And we've heard from Suzanne and Neermin O'Neal who's here.
Jim, I think you I think Kim De Niro, the Deputy Director of the Library is also.
I am here. Thanks, Nancy. Kim De Niro, Deputy Director of Heights Libraries.
Welcome.
I don't know if we mentioned Joe McCray.
Hello, Joe.
Hello, Joe McCray, Director of Parks and Recreation of the Cleveland Heights.
So I'm going to like dig into our agenda. In the chat, I included the agenda and a listing of all the participants that I was aware of that was going to be here and council members. So you can pull up a copy of the agenda if you would like. It is pretty straightforward. We're going to go through basically the four entities that are here this evening and just do kind of a quick, you know, in our world, myself and Liz Kirby came up with our agenda. We have the mayors that came up with their agenda. And Nancy came up with the agenda for the Heights Libraries. I'd like to give us about 20 minutes of presentation time and maybe 10 minutes of speaking. So let's try not to go over that because otherwise this could be an awful long meeting. But I want to make sure people do have enough time to have some meaningful conversation. And I'd like to start off.
Excuse me, Jim, can you share the link again in the chat?
Yeah, I don't have it either.
Yeah, with Google meets, once you come in, if something is shared prior to you coming in, you don't see it in the chat.
Oh, you don't get to see it. All of us. There you go. You're welcome. So let's start with Cleveland Heights, University Heights School District. Elizabeth Kirby, our Superintendent, is going to give you kind of a quick overview of the schools and some of the challenges that we have. Liz, you want to get started for us?
Yes, I will. Thank you very much. And good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to see everyone together again. I don't think we could have ever imagined what a year would look like between the last time that we had our joint meeting and today. But we are here still standing. And I can tell you, this year in the district, our theme for all our community stakeholders and our teachers and our staff and our families and our students was this notion of adaptability, collaboration, and equity. And anyone who knows anything about education, it's a very difficult institution to shift. Schools, districts, it's just a hard, hard model to shift. But this year, I am really proud of the ways that our district has made multiple changes against all of the challenges of the pandemic this year. From a collaborative collaboration perspective, we have been deeply engaged with our families, with our students, with our teachers, with our staff, with our community partners to manage the challenges of this year and to stay focused on our strategic initiatives. And so I thank those stakeholders, and I count you guys in that group. And finally, we really have kept a keen eye on equity and have used that as the lens in which we lead, make decisions, and collaborate. I'll talk a little bit about that in my presentation today. I do have some slides up, so I will share my screen. I'm not going to read everything. You all, you know, have access to it, but I will go through some highlights. Let me get that going now. So a couple of things, just in terms of where we stand academically in the district. Today was the first day that we started to offer our five day a week in person learning model for all of our students across all of our schools. As you all know, we have managed multiple instructional systems this year. The way that I like to think about it is, you know, we've built essentially three school systems over the course of one year, and really four, if you count last spring, because that was a brand new, a brand new challenge for all of us. So we had remote learning, we've had hybrid learning, and now we are back to our in person, five day a week model for education. We actually are still offering all three of these models to our families because we do have people that are at different levels of comfort in terms of having a full return to school. And so that's, you know, an option that we that we really wanted to make sure that we kept for our families. As it relates to equity, we have continued with our equity training that that we have been engaged in for a while. Our focus in particular this year in district has been Equity Policy 101 and also implicit bias. We also stay focused in looking at our academic and qualitative data through an equity lens. So every quarter, we take a pause, look at grades, look at attendance, look at assessment data to see where we are and where we need to go based on that data. And we always look at not only overall students, but also how students are performing as they are identified with different priority groups. And then finally, I was really excited to have have the opportunity to tell the equity story of the district in a panel that was sponsored by the League of Women Voters. That was this past February. It was a great opportunity to share our story in CHUH of how we really are realizing the vision of our equity policy. So these are just a couple of district highlights. And trust me, I had to cut a lot of things out, but I just wanted to shout out a couple of things that we are really proud of, and even more proud because it has been such a challenging year. So on the CTE side, you guys know that we are the showcase district for the CTE consortium of five or five districts. Recently, two of our students, Christian Hall and Faith Griffin Hodge, participated in the District Nine DECA virtual winter competition, and they advanced to state in one third place. This past fall, we learned that 52 of our students, both from the class of 2020 and 2021, were named AP Scholars by the College Board. We also have a sophomore, Melody Shans, who was selected by the House of Representatives for her her wonderful art exhibit that she shared. And she was one student in each of the 99 legislative districts that was selected for this honor. One of our teachers at Garrity, Amanda Blazetick, was recommended, was I'm sorry, was acknowledged by the University Heights City Council as its Educator of the Year. Ms. Blazetick is amazing. And even during this time of the pandemic, so committed to her students, really gone above and beyond to provide for them. You see here, for example, she raised over $1,000 to purchase necessities for students and their families. She's just been a wonderful, wonderful spirit in our district. And we thank University Heights for giving us the opportunity for her to get that recognition. One of our seniors, Hannah Bradley, was named by PBS as one of its 20 under 20 up and coming storytellers. Really excited about this unique opportunity and unique skill that she was celebrated for. I'm sure many of you all heard about our swimmers who, for the first time, and I have to put my glasses on. They broke the school record that had been held at Heights High School for 56 years. So we had four of our students go downstate and competed. We were so proud of them. And it just speaks to the spirit of our students, how they continue to strive for excellence and greatness. And we're seeing the results of that. And I can tell you, many of our sports have been extremely, extremely successful during the school year. So we're very excited about that. And thank the coaches and our Athletic Director for his leadership, Joe DiBatto. And finally, on Friday, there was a wonderful ceremony that was held at our at our track. A wall of fame ceremony. If you go down to the track, I'm in the stadium, you will see on one end, a list of the state champions, and on the other end, a list of the the record holders in both boys and girls track. And I will tell you, Coach Holland, I was amazed at how he remembered the time of students from 15 and 20 years ago, and each and every student's story. It was just a wonderful, wonderful event. So please, as you visit the track, please check that out. So from a community engagement perspective, you know, we still have many, many things happening across our community. We do have blood drives that are held at the Wiley Campus. We have multiple dates in April and more coming up in May and June. So anyone who's interested can register on the on the Red Cross website. And of course, we encourage you to share this across your channels as well. Overall, since last March, we have served over a million meals to students in our community. A lot of that has been through the hard work and partnership with our nutrition provider, but also community partners that have served as sites for meal pickup as well, especially through the summer. And currently, we're really excited. We're planning with our community partners for a really big summer program that I'm going to talk a little bit more about. The Heights Library is one of our partners in this. In addition to other community organizations, we're super excited about that. In terms of the Bus Depot, the current site for our buses is for sale, so we will have to move out. We have six months to do that. So we are in the process right now exploring moving the Bus Depot back to the Wiley Campus. And so these next couple of slides talk through our Summer of Learning. I'm not going to go through all of these. We do have a presentation in our last board meeting where we extensively walk through these. But we really are going to have a summer explosion of opportunities and wonderful But we really are going to have a summer explosion of opportunities and wonderful things for our students this summer in all grades, grades pre-K to twelve. So we have online programs that can engage all of our students all year flexibly as needed, um, through the Exact Path Study Island, Edge Newity courses that we will be offering. For our pre-K to eight students, we have summer camps that will have academic enrichment in the beginning of the day. And in the afternoon, we will have, um, you know, fun, well, not that academics isn't fun, um, but other additional enrichment app, app, opportunities for kids to keep them excited and focused and give them an opportunity to, you know, socialize since many students haven't been able to do that as much this year. We also will have intensive support for those students to really have been struggling academically this year, so we can give them an opportunity to do some catch-up. Across all of our summer programs, we will have social emotional support and also opportunities for, um, health and wellness. So Metro Health will be partnering with us, providing, um, their clinic and also immunizations. Counselors and social workers will be working all summer. We'll continue the summer food program. Um, and we have, uh, things like orientations for new students that are come, that will be happening over the summer as well. Next couple of slides, just go through the details of the Tiger Cup Camp. Um, and again, more details there. Cleveland Heights High School will be the hub. So, um, as you go by the school this summer, it will be a very, very busy place. Um, we will have all of our students there. The pre-K program is going to be at Garrity. Um, but, uh, but most of the programs will be housed at Cleveland Heights High School. So it'll be great to have the whole Tiger Nation together in one spot for the summer. Some other upcoming events that we have, uh, and you'll hear more about our accolades. On April fifteenth, we will hold our State of Our Schools, um, annual session that will happen at seven PM. We are in the process of rolling out our kindergarten information night, so those happen from April fifteenth through the twenty-ninth. Our Virtual Family Academy has launched, um, and so every Friday in April, we lay out virtual resource families to use in order to support their students, both academically, academically and also from the perspective of social emotional wellness. And then finally, the Heights High School graduation will be held right here in our community in the CHHS Stadium on June third at six o'clock PM. We are already in the process, process of transforming the field into a beautiful graduation site. So that's a, our, the general update for the district in terms of, uh, some of the things that have just been happening this year. Of course, on our website, we have many, many stories. If you follow us on social media, you'll be able to get, um, additional information of all the wonderful things happening in the district. I will say that one of the things that we've really been challenged with this year is, uh, testing. And so if you were to walk into any of our schools right now, there will likely be, uh, groups of students that are engaged in testing. Uh, the state of Ohio is still requiring that students take those spring tests. And that, that requirement also stems from requirement that comes from the federal government. The challenge that we have been facing is that there was some legislation that was passed out of Columbus that really should have freed all schools and all school districts from any negative consequence of the spring test. But unfortunately, there is some clarity that is needed in the legislation. So we will probably need some new language in upcoming legislation to ensure that students are not penalized, um, based on their performance in the spring state tests. So I've received many inquiries from families who really didn't want their, their child to test either. They weren't planning on having the child return to school in person, or they just didn't want the pressure of testing. You know, there's been so much that has happened this year. But unfortunately, the way that the legislation is currently structured, if a student does not test, the school, um, would get a zero in terms of a score for the performance. And the scores, uh, of the students that are testing right now would count towards EdChoice eligibility in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, uh, when parents have asked me, do we get penalized? You know, will, will my school get penalized if I don't, if my child does not test? Cause I don't feel comfortable with that. Unfortunately, the way that the legislation is written, yes, they would get penalized. So we've been working with, um, officials from Columbus, trying to get some clarity on this. Um, and just to make sure that this is something that, um, does not impact not only our district, but all schools across the state of Ohio, because this was not the intention, um, my understanding legislators were surprised, um, that this clarity was needed. So we'll continue to work on that, um, so that we don't have, um, you know, pandemic testing punishment, um, happening this year. Um, so that speaks to one of the points that Jim and I have on the agenda. And so with that, that is a really quick wrap-up. Again, uh, more information to come during our upcoming State of the Schools. Um, we also send out to, um, all of our stakeholders, a monthly newsletter that captures some of the highlights that are happening across the district. All right. And that concludes my report. Jim, did you, um, want discussion or anything like that? Are we going to just continue?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions for, you know, s- school district folk like us?
I, I had a chat. I have the fifteenth on my calendar. Have I just heard the whole? Can you hear me?
No, uh, Mary, you have not heard the whole thing. You're going to miss the student performances and I think some details about our finances and our strategic plan. So I think there's a lot- The school's address.
It's on my calendar though.
Great. Mayor Brennan, do you have a question?
Uh, yes, yes. Uh, um, I, I noted it in the presentation, the, the development with regard to the bus depot. That is something that I was also going to bring up during the meeting. Um, this was the first I was hearing of the district's intention to return to, to Wiley, which I don't believe the facility is really, you know, prepared for. Um, the parking that was there was run out when the, when it was being used as a swing space. And, uh, the city has expressed its reservations for some time about returning the depot to the, the Wiley Campus. Uh, so, you know, I, I don't necessarily want to have a back and forth here this evening, but I do think that, uh, we do need to explore the alternatives with regard to, um, other potential sites. Um, the, the Wiley site is not ready to go as is, nor is it technically zoned for that purpose. So, um, uh, one of the things I was going to suggest in our report is that we create a committee of stakeholders or even a task force to, to, to address that situation as it is in everybody's interest that we do find a permanent home that is more centrally located, uh, for, uh, the district and for, uh, our constituents. Thank you.
Michael, that's something which we probably should have a further conversation about. So I'll, I'll make sure I reach out to you and we can, can, we can continue that conversation.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, sorry, I'm on mute. Um, Barbara, your hand was up?
Yes, thank you, Jim. Um, I'm delighted to hear Superintendent Kirby, uh, addressing the matter of possible, uh, punishment, as I think she put it, um, with the state testing and how that's going to be handled and whether or not, you know, kids are in school and out of school, or if they're doing it from home. Um, it's a concern for a lot of folks. Um, I work with a, with a school and, uh, everybody, you know, they're doing testing and primarily everybody is in school, but that is not the case everywhere. And that's, that's a huge component on, on how, you know, things are addressed and how the schools can benefit and the districts can benefit. So I'm glad and not surprised that, uh, Superintendent Kirby's all over that. So thank you for that.
Yes, you're welcome. And to, um, address Nancy's question, we are working on a letter, uh, that we're going to, to circulate to area districts, uh, to sign on, asking that the legislators fix this, um, this spring as they continue, um, rolling out additional legislation around this. So, um, I'll definitely keep everyone posted on where we are with that.
Patty?
Yeah, hi, um, Ms. Kirby. I, my question kind of is along the lines of, so when the pandemic started, everything was in emergency mode. So we were all kind of just scrambling to figure it out. But as we're coming up on a second, like into the summer and, and into the fall again, when most people will be vaccinated, including the children who are at risk, but we're be, going to be looking at teachers maybe needing to, to get those boosters. I guess my big question from a communication standpoint is, since there is time now, at what point will the district make the decision of what is happening in the fall? Like, right now you have five kids or fi- five days a week, kids inside the building, two days a week, kids at home and remote, and then kids all remote. But I'm just wondering at what point the community will know, is everyone wearing masks and everyone's in the building or what the choices are? So it's not so much what's going to happen. I'm just curious as to if there's a date by which you're, you guys will make the call.
Well, as it relates to the safety guidance, we have really aligned our guidance with the Board of Health. I anticipate that we will be wearing masks next year, uh, just kind of, just given my own, uh, observation of the science and the discussions that we've been having with the Board of Health. Um, ultimately, I, I would hope that we would move as many students as possible to five-day-a-week instruction. Um, but always having some type of option, virtual option for families, because we know that that is important. We also, um, it's likely that there will not be vaccines for our much younger students for a while. And so we'll always have to have, you know, that option. So, um, you know, I can't give you a, a date of when we'll have a solid plan and quite frankly, we had multiple dates of solid plans last year and then the numbers started to change, right? And then something else came up and then, you know, things, things were introduced. But, um, we, we will, we do think that we have a, a pretty good structure right now with the five days that we can build off of for next year. So I can tell you that there likely will be the five-day model, um, and then some type of remote option. Uh, but not like multiple options, like, you know, the remote and hybrid. We're just offering that now because there are families who, you know, were kind of starting to, to come back in different levels and different ways. And so we wanted to be sensitive to that and have some flexibility there. Um, but next year, you know, people will have comfort with, with all those models. Um, and so I, I doubt that I would be recommending that.
Dana, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Um, first, I'd just like to make a comment in reference to Wiley being used again as the bus depot. My understanding is we're supposed to continue to use Wiley as we remodel each one of the schools. So I have a concern and I don't think it needs to be addressed here, but I'd like, you know, if you're going to address that at the State of the Union and, or at some other opportunity to hear about that, that that still is our move on, uh, the children being moved out of their homeschools as we remodel them. Um, but my question is, uh, for Ms. Kirby and the board. Um, as, as colleges are moving away from using the ACT and SAT scores so much, I'd like to know if we are considering making moves on, planning for, so we can get something in the works in the near future of having, um, our high schools do, do community service. It has long time been done in some other districts and it is really something that colleges like to see and, uh, helps them make decisions in reference to which students they would, you know, choose. Um, and I think it helps students glean what they are and aren't good at. You're not necessarily going to get a project that's something you want to go into. But even touching on, as we've gone through this pandemic, seeing what our children are capable of, which is phenomenal to me. I mean, I work with kids, so I see it, but I'm, I'm really proud of so much. I, I love these stories, you know, both on our website and out in the media in general of what children, um, not just teenagers, children have added to their communities during this time. So I'd like to know, are you guys going to make a move on that? Can we start to plan for something and can we kind of make a move on it promptly? Because colleges are going to need something else to, uh, cipher through, you know, which students they're going to include. Um, with how, how are they going to, you know, make decisions and we want to give our kids as much up as possible? So that's my question.
So two things I would say to that, one, uh, there is, there are more and more graduation seals that are coming out of, um, Columbus as a part of, uh, pathways for students to successfully complete high school. Uh, there is a community service seal, uh, that we have and will continue to promote with our students. Um, number two, I agree with you that community service is very important for students to have the experience of. Um, one thing that we would want to revisit, and this is, this, I, I also think we'll be, be a part of our college and career task force work, is whether or not we want to make something like this outside of the seal, you know, um, a requirement for students. I don't necessarily think that that is, um, needed. I think it's more about offering the opportunities and making sure that students are aware how important having that, um, in their portfolio is. Um, so we do have kind of two things working around that. One of the graduation seals that Ohio has started to roll out. Again, there's a community service one. Um, and then the second is, um, deepening the work that's going to be coming out of our college and career task force to really emphasize to students what it looks like to build a comprehensive profile for college so that they can successfully, you know, gain admission with scholarship support, et cetera.
Thank you. Anyone from the board?
I mean, as far as promoting community service, I, I think we've all been pushing community service. And if I recall, some of our classes actually make that a requirement for graduation, I mean, for their class graduation. Um, I don't recall it's anything on our board policy. Um, but that's something that we would have to think about if it's something that we want to add. Um, I think with the state coming up with these graduation seals, it makes our job a lot easier because it sort of forces some kids down these pathways. I mean, we are going to have a, it's been moved to the end of the middle of next month. Our college career task force has been talking about this and they're presenting their recommendations to us in the middle of May at our work session. And I've been, I've, I've attended about half of those, uh, committee meetings. And if I recall correctly, community service is on one of their pathways. So it's something we're addressing. Um, I'm not sure it's going to be a requirement for all students, but it's certainly a requirement that we're, that we're trying to push.
I see a couple of hands up. So can we go, Dan DeVita? I think Barbara might-
Yeah, DeVita.
Those hands, Jim.
Yeah, I see him. DeVita, you had a question?
Yes, I, I have a, a comment as well. I wanted to thank, uh, Superintendent Kirby for being all over that legislation. And I want, like to request, uh, when you send that letter out, if you could email me as well. And any, uh, thing I can offer to help at the state level, uh, please, uh, make sure you contact me and I can push on my end far, as far as all the boards I sit on at the state level as well.
DeVita has been a wonderful champion. There was a time, this time last year where Jody, Liz and myself went down to Columbus and we, uh, met with, um, OBC and pretty much all the heads of all unions, um, in Columbus, and that was thanks to DeVita. So thank you very much for that. Um, Dan Hines had a question and why don't we go through that real quick and then we'll move on to the Cleveland Heights report.
Yeah, it, it's not actually a question. It's just I wanted to explicitly connect two dots. Um, and that is that the high stakes testing that we're talking about, um, you do two things. First of all, these tests, so that everybody understands, have now a decades-long trail of academic research that shows that they chronically under-report the performance of both students of color as well as, actually students, all minority students, as well as, um, high, uh, the students in high poverty families. Um, so that's critical. And then also, these tests are the ones that are used to, um, give, uh, report cards to the individual schools. And so these are the tests that give, you know, um, Maple Ridge Elementary School, their school ranking from the state. And where I want to connect that dot to is property values and property tax values. And so, you know, it really does be, begin with these tests as we, as we advocate around these tests. These tests have a really important direct impact on property values in our- on property values in our community. So it's a little bit bigger picture. Thank you.
I'd like to move on to the Cleveland Heights report. Jason Stein, you want to lead us through that? And Liz, we may need to unmute Susanna Nierman O'Neil, because I think she's gonna give her report verbally. She was having trouble getting to this Google Meet.
One second. Is Suzanne on the phone?
Yeah, Suzanne's on the phone.
I'm just gonna unmute both of the folks on the phone.
Jason, you want to introduce us? You're on mute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Perfectly, great.
All right, great. And is Suzanne a? Because other than unboosting, Suzanne is our city manager. She's gonna be presenting Cleveland Heights's talking points tonight.
Yeah, Suzanne, Suzanne, if you could try to unmute yourself, it's not letting me unmute you. I don't know if it's because you're on the phone, or... But if you could unmute yourself.
I think I just unmuted. Did I?
We can hear you. Yes, we can hear you, Suzanne.
I've made progress.
Good, okay.
So I really had hoped, I really had hoped to see all of you in person techno-wise, but I don't really have a Gmail account, and that has caused me a problem. So I apologize for that. I hope you can all hear me. I am going to give some information about the city of Cleveland Heights. And I know that what the schools did when there were questions, people raised their hands. I know Jason is on, and he'll be able to see who's asking questions. So maybe we can do it that way. Starting out, the state of the city for Cleveland Heights, I wanted to let everybody know that this is our 100th year. So we will be celebrating this year in August with banners around the city, postcards for residents to sign at the community center. And we'll also have some commemorative coasters that we will be distributing to celebrate 100 years. And also some history on our website for people to look back on. In terms of what is one of the biggest priorities that we have this year as a city, it's our housing. We have quite a few vacant lots around the city. And we have been very proactive in researching entities that would be interested in infill housing on those vacant lots. So in particular, we're gonna be focusing on vacant lots in the Caledonia area and also Altamont de Soto. We're currently negotiating right now with companies who answered our RFP, RFQ regarding this. And we really hope by mid-year that we are gonna be able to get this going. And it'll be a real positive for our neighborhoods. We also are working with our Future Heights, the CDC there. And they are going to be doing renovation in areas throughout the city for distressed residential properties. So it's important for the community to realize that we know how important revitalizing our housing is. And as you know, better housing brings more people into our town, more people using the schools, more people accessing facilities, more people going to the library. So it's a real goal for us this year that we will be able to strengthen our housing. The other thing that we're working on as a priority, excuse me, is our police, our public safety issues. And I'm very proud of Cleveland Heights that we have contracted with Cleveland State's Division of Diversity and Inclusion and specifically asked them for assistance to put on public forums regarding various police issues that are important to people right now. In the world we're in, it's very important for us as a city to really show that we're listening and that we will make changes as those changes are, become obvious to us. So as a result, we're doing two forums for the public regarding police initiatives. The first one is tomorrow night and begins at seven o'clock on our website. And that public forum is going to address recruitment and selection and also vehicle pursuits. And the way the forum will work is CSU will give an overview of those two topics. And then residents will be able to go into break rooms online and talk with various people from CSU about their opinions and concerns. So that's the first forum, which is tomorrow night. And then the second forum is on April 27th at seven o'clock. And that will have the same basic format. And that entire forum will be on the use of force. And we have been working, our police chief and our captains have been working with CSU to provide them with the data that we have so far for them to do some analysis of what Cleveland Heights has done in terms of police work out in the field and in terms of the data that we have collected. This is a very important issue for us and something that we really want to aggressively look at in terms of what is it that possibly might need changes and adjustments in our policing in the city of Cleveland Heights. I want to move into economic development, which is also on the agenda. And along with housing, economic development, as you all know, is very important. It strengthens the tax base. And when it is residential as well as commercial, it again brings in new people to our town. I'll just touch on a few of the developments that are going on right now. The long-awaited top-of-the-hill development is progressing on schedule. The garage, as you drive by, you'll see the garage is completed there. And I just want to note, because there's a lot of new people involved, that we approved with the school district in 2018, a TIF agreement. And that TIF agreement ensures that once the project is completed, the school district will receive $410,714 over each year for 30 years. And that was a negotiated agreement that was very positive between the city and the schools. And the good news is that, you know, when it was just a surface parking lot, all that came from that was $39,000. So this will be a good increase for our school district. And we all know, all of our entities know, we all need additional funding. And so this will be $410,000 every year for 30 years. I also want to mention the metro expansion. I'm sure you've all read about it. Metro is expanding here at the Ring Road at Severance, adding on a mental health facility to their current hospital. And this $35 million building is, when it's completed, going to bring in between 200 and 250 new jobs to Cleveland Heights. And all of us feel that this, there's a possibility that this will enable a jumpstart for Severance Center. I know everyone has concerns about it, would like it to be revitalized. And we all feel that this expansion of Metro will be a good signal to people that the Ring Road is alive and well, and we'd like Severance itself to be in the same place. We're also, as you, most of you know, Meadow Brook and Lee is gonna have a new development. And we are gonna be presenting to council next week, the staff recommendation on that developer. And we're also putting out next week an RFQ, RFP for the Taylor Tudor Building on South Taylor. The city owns that building, and we would like to see if there's any interest there for someone to revitalize that structure as well. I'm sure that you all know that new development is gonna impact our schools in a positive way. And the more development we have, the more we take pressure off of our homeowners. And nobody who's an elected official or in an administrative position hasn't heard that the taxes are high. And so we're brainstorming ways for development to help us with our tax base and make us a little bit stronger going forward. I also want to mention in terms of development, that council people have mentioned that we are ready to work with the schools about any possibility of redevelopment of the Millican School property and turning it into a tax-producing property. So we are very open to working with the schools and brainstorming. Our staff is always ready to jump on that, and we're available. The next item on the agenda is about our community center. And I know you're gonna be able to see Joe McCray, but I do want to just mention as city manager that we are being very, very careful in terms of COVID and the different variants that we all know and are hearing about, so that we don't do something because we're anxious to open something and then have to backtrack. So Joe's gonna give you a report on where we are with some of the things we're gonna be doing at the community center and with some of our recreation programs.
Thank you, Suzanne, and thank you, everyone, for allowing me to be a part of this meeting. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes, okay, great. So I'm Joe McCray, I'm the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Cleveland Heights. Happy to be with you all again. It's been a couple years since I've been at this meeting presenting, but I'm happy to be with you all this evening. And I just want to talk about the phased reopening plan that the city manager has kind of mentioned and kind of go over some highlights. And then I'll be happy to entertain questions afterwards. So we've basically been closed since March 13th of 2020 in terms of the community center and most of our recreation programs. We quickly pivoted to virtual programs on our Facebook Live page, which is still going on to this day. Some of them have gotten a lot of accolades. If you know who Ms. Duck is, some of you may know who she is, maybe not. She's one of our seniors who has gotten nationwide accolades for her virtual classes and things of that nature. And we continue to expand that. We have some personal training classes on there, things of that nature, all free to residents, all free to pretty much anyone that wants to follow the Cleveland Heights Recreation Page. We got good reviews about that. Obviously, you know, last year was a difficult year for us. The hope is that we can reopen and do some more this year, knowing more about the virus, hopefully understanding a little bit more about how to proceed safely, having better access to PPE and cleaning products and things of that nature. Our intention is to try to open up to the extent that we can safely, as the city manager said. So we kind of broken it up into two phases, spring being April and May, and then summer being June, July and August, and into September, honestly. With spring, we're focusing on, you know, expanding the virtual offerings and also doing our, providing our outdoor recreational activities. So our youth sports are back, our adult sports will be back outside. We're gonna put back up the basketball hoops. For the school district, this is a big deal. There are a lot of hikes, it's a big-time basketball place. They've gone without for over a year. I have appreciated their patience. We're putting up new backboards and new rims. Hopefully, that stuff will be done by the end of this month. They'll be happy to see it. I'm already getting phone calls about it, the excitement and energy. So that is coming back. We've been doing some limited senior transportation this spring because our seniors have really been the most heavily impacted by this. They're not only the most vulnerable to the virus, but senior citizens are also the most displaced in some respects with regard to transportation to the grocery store and to the doctor's office. So we've been providing that service, limited, not to the extent that we used to, but in a very careful and safe way. We've been doing a number of food distribution activities for the community, but really targeted on seniors, because seniors can't get out and really have experienced some hardships in terms of just getting the basic foods and toiletries that the rest of us can drive to the store with a mask and get to, no problem. And then one of the big items that we've done is we've advanced our tech distribution. We pass out to seniors, we allow them to rent things called Grandpads. And we invested and got a grant and bought a bunch of Chromebooks for seniors to rent, so that they could be connected. A lot of our seniors lived this past year in isolation. And so in an attempt to serve them during this past year, we tried to connect them with technology and hotspots and things of that nature, so that they could engage their friends and do meetings and things of that nature. Right? And then lastly, we had a number of either testing sites for COVID for the community, or we've been really, really intentional about advocating for and pressing for a vaccine pod. And with the help of council, specifically Councilwoman Russell and the rest of council support and a number of other individuals who I'm sure were advocating, we were able to partner with the county and get a vaccination pod at the community center last month for the seniors. We had over 300 seniors on a waitlist who could not get to the Wallstein Center for a vaccine, who could not get to Hillcrest for a vaccine, who could not, you know, needed something in the area. And we were able to get 500 people vaccinated. First vaccination was last month, the second vaccination will be this Friday. So we're very excited about that. It turned out really well. Again, that was something that was really focused on the seniors who cannot make their way to these other locations. So that's a little bit about what we're doing for the spring, right? So that takes us through April and May. And the summer is when I think people are really looking forward to some answers from me, right? So I have answers. The number one thing is, is that Cumberland Pool will be open. Let me say that again, so that I can make sure everyone is aware, because that's been the most asked question. Cumberland Pool will be open, okay? It will be open from June until Labor Day weekend, like normal. Okay? So the season, the length of the season will be the same. However, there will be protocols in place to keep people safe. So we are looking at the idea of having residents RSVP for lap lanes, for instance. We are looking at having specific time slots for camps, because we get visited by a bunch of camps and things of that nature, right? We are looking at having specific times for, you know, open swim and family swim and having participation limits or a cap on the attendance. We're working on some technology things that will hopefully allow you to know real time how many people are in the pool and what our limit is. So you'll know if you look at our website, and this is not finished yet, but we're working on it. So I'm giving you all a heads up of what could be. Don't hold me to it, but we're working on it. That if the max limit of number of people that we can have in the pool is 100, we may be able to post on our website in real time, you know, that there are 70 people in the pool at this point, which means there are 30 open slots for you to come in and go swim. We're working on that because we want everyone that wants to swim to be able to come and swim, but we want to be able to do it safely. There probably will not be locker rooms this year, right? So a locker room will not occur this year, but the restrooms will occur. So you will have access to the restrooms, probably not access to the locker rooms, right? We will have pool furniture on deck, it'll be spread out. We may or may not allow you to bring your own, we've not decided that yet. So we're working through a lot of the process and protocols. The thing that we know is that we will be opening Cumberland Pool. Spread the word, please. I get the most phone calls and emails about Cumberland Pool. So people should know that it will be open. With regards to the community center... With regards to the community center, well, let me hit on another one. I have the community center last. Kane Park will open this year as well. The season will be different. There will be protocols in place. We will open Kane Park July through September. Kane Park will open with the Arts Festival. The Arts Festival will happen this summer. Typically, we have 150 booths for artists. We'll have 75 booths this year. They will be spread out 10 feet apart, right? So we're looking at ways to provide to restore services, but in ways that are safe and take into account that we're still in the middle of a pandemic situation, right? We don't want to put residents at risk, but we do want to provide the recreational services that we've heard people want back so dearly. Our concert series will be smaller. Kane Park typically fits 2,500 residents in a sellout. That will probably not be the case. You're looking more at about 400 to 500 individuals. And it's literally math. If you look at the seating chart and you think about how you can keep six feet between each group of people that come together, a family group, or however you would like to call it, it doesn't really work when you get higher than 500. So we're looking at about 400 to 500, which means that we probably won't have a ton of big national artists because we use the ticket revenue to help offset the cost of getting the artists, right? But we will feature some very talented local and regional artists. And I think that people will enjoy what we do. And I think that people will be happy to be outside at an outdoor concert venue again, enjoying music, hopefully enjoying that part. So we're excited about that. In terms of the community center, we are looking to restore the Fitness Center again to a modified extent in June. So the first full week of June, right now, we're preparing to reopen the Fitness Center again. There will be a maximum capacity that is there. Typically, it has been about 30% of max capacity, right? We have approximately 70 pieces of equipment in that space, right? It's been spread out through the track 12 feet apart. When you talk about indoor fitness and things of that nature, the risk via the CDC and other entities that I've spoken with is a little bit higher. So we have to be intentional about spreading out as much as we can and really being intentional about picking a number of people that we can occupy that space with because you're exerting yourself. Your breath is carrying further. So we're working through that whole process, but we're looking at the first full week of June to restore that. We will have summer camp. So camp will be capped at 40 kids. We're working with Jump Start Sports Camp again. We are going to utilize the youth scholarship fund to fund five spots for the school district summer program. So we've been working with Nancy Peppler on that. We will reserve five of those spots specifically for the school district to appoint kids, needy kids, who would otherwise probably not be able to participate in that camp to be able to participate for free. The city will absorb that cost through our youth scholarship fund, which is a nice use of the fund. We didn't get to use it last year because of us being closed. So this is a nice way to restore that. Jump Start Sports Camp will happen. Heights Youth Theater Camp at Kane Park will happen. We'll have basketball camps. And we're also trying to work with either the Nature Center or the Metro Parks on a potential nature ecology camp outdoors. So we're working on a lot of things to kind of restore recreational activities in the city. We're excited about it. It's good to be, you know, back juices flowing and pushing forward with some things and hopefully you all will support and enjoy it. We appreciate the partnerships we have with you all. With that in my report.
And I want to add that I want to add that the Parks and Rec staff from the director and his team have done a tremendous job making sure that going forward, things are being done the right way for safety purposes. And I really appreciate all the energy and time that has gone into that. Also, I wanted to add that in terms of group events that we usually would have had, of course, we had none of them last year. But this year, just to be on the safe side, we are not going to have our Memorial Day event at the Veterans Memorial, which is end of May. We're going to be careful about group gathering. And we are still looking at block parties that may be held after mid-July. But we really want to keep our eye on the COVID and the variants, just to be safe.
Okay, do see that there, there's some hands up. They've been up for a while, so I don't know if there actually is a question. But first, there's Barbara Blankfield.
No, I don't believe my hand is up, but thank you. That may have been from earlier.
Okay, I'm sorry, then maybe.
No, that's fine. That may have been from earlier.
All right.
Jason, I forgot to ask Barbara that we have not received our tree yet.
You know, I just thought about that the other day when I was looking at something else for you. So you and I need to be in touch.
Yes, yes.
I'm delighted that that both cities had such great response for the census and everybody benefits. But I was delighted to see that you really attained the results that you were hoping to get with this. So that was tremendous.
Well, thank you for partnering with me for both of our cities.
Absolutely.
Always, Davida.
Dana?
We did have a lot of fun doing that.
Good evening. Thank you. So my question is for council. Will the topic of the curfew be added back to the agenda? And also, when can we expect the biannual report from the Racial Justice Task Force?
Well, the second part of that is the answer to the first. The Racial Justice Task Force is going to take up the curfew and look at that. And as far as the the second question, the Racial Justice Task Force is still being put together. We just appointed our chair on Lovejoy and our vice chair, Mario. You know what, I'm not remembering the last name. But we just appointed them. Thank you, Susanna. And now we're still putting together, the chair and vice chair will be looking over all the applications and making a recommendation to council to fill out the other 20-some members of the Racial Justice Task Force.
Hi, Jason, it's Jody.
Did that answer your question? Go ahead, Jody.
Yeah, just a little, just to add on to that. If the task force is to go for 24 months, and I guess within that, there would be four reports. If those reports don't happen, will, you know, will it be extended? Or does that depend?
Probably the answer is depends on what the the chair and the members of the task force want to do. But the 24 months is a long period, and we're hoping that's going to be sufficient time to get it done. But if they need more time, if they request it, I can't speak for the council members that'll be here when they when they submit their report. But I would, I would guess that they would extend that time if they felt they needed it.
Thank you.
Sure, Jody.
This is a, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I got skipped in the in the hands up. I think this is a question for Susanna, but you talked about a lot of different economic development opportunities that you're pursuing. And I was just wondering if there's anything planned for the Noble Corridor. I didn't hear anything about that. And maybe the library can talk about that.
We actually just met about the Noble Corridor and with some council and staff and are working on putting together some kind of a RFP RFQ for the city on lots so that we can see what kind of interest we can put together. Noble Corridor absolutely is a priority. And for that reason, it is cited in the Future Heights CDC agreement that we have. And we also were pleased that Start Right would be working in Caledonia off of Noble. So it is definitely a priority as it was in the master plan. And we should have something ready to go to put out about public properties along the corridor fairly soon.
Okay, thank you.
I think, and Davida, did you want to, did you want to say anything about the Noble Corridor?
Well, I want to thank Jody and everyone who has been paying attention to the Noble area. Jason and I have been really pushing that very hard because it is truly a distressed part of our community. And we need to make it whole so that they don't feel left out or left behind, so that they feel a part of our community. And even where I walk and talk and on all sides of Cleveland Heights, the residents are saying that we need some attention in Noble. So we are finally getting that. And Jason and I feel pretty good about what's going to happen in the near future. You'll be hearing some things come out shortly regarding the Noble area and some things we're trying to do to get things moving. So just stay tuned.
All right, Max Millian.
Thank you. It was brought up kind of briefly about, you know, the Racial Justice Task Force in Cleveland Heights and looking at policing in this community. And I, and I thought it would be, we would be remiss as community leaders today not to mention the senseless murder of Dante Wright the other day in Minneapolis and Minnesota. Again, another murder of a young black man by police. And while I think it's easy for us to sit here and say, well, it's it's somewhere else. It doesn't happen here. You know, we have a nice slogan that says, "All are welcome." I think that Cleveland Heights needs to do a little kind of searching of itself. And I'm a member of the community as well. You know, we're, we're doing a, well, I'll get into that in a second. But, you know, there's data showing that traffic stops by police and subsequent arrests happen at much, much higher rates and much more frequently in communities of color in Cleveland Heights, much higher than in white communities. We still have, as Gabe kind of mentioned, and I think we brought up on several occasions, curfews, which whether or not is intended, implicit bias can often lead to the targeting of young black people in our community. And I know that, you know, we're going to be looking at budgets and stuff like that going forward as a community, the city is. And I think it's really important and it's kind of a serious time now to look at the budget, see how money can be more effectively spent. We're one of the most overpoliced communities in Northeast Ohio. You know, and also with the schools, looking at their relationship with the police in Cleveland Heights. And just, you know, doing a deep dive into that and how much it's costing and what the actual implications are. I've been talking more and more with black people in our community, including a lot of younger black people, recent graduates of high school. And they, they feel like it was a negative experience having them there anecdotally. To kind of point to something that the library is doing, we have this ongoing talks about the 1619 Project, which is a really great program that we've been doing where one of our librarians has been speaking with community groups about sort of looking at the history of racism in America and institutional racism in America. And it might not be the intention of anybody on this board now, but it still does exist. And it's a problem that we as community leaders, I think, have a responsibility to address. So we have issues like the curfew. We have issues like the young man who was arrested wrongfully at Marcus last year, which was disgraceful. And then how long it took to get those charges dropped against him. And so I just wanted to say that as a community member, but also as a, as what I would be considered a civic leader. I think we all are on this call. So that's something we can all work together on to better in this community. Thank you.
I just, I want to thank you for what you just said. And I want you to know that one of the reasons why we have this contract with CSU and one of the reasons why we are having the police forums and looking at the data is exactly what you were talking about. We want to improve. We want to be sure the money is going in the right place. And we want the community to realize that police, the police forums are very important for the future and what we'll learn from those. So thank you for your comments.
Jason?
Yeah, I see her, yeah, Davida.
I just want to say thank you so very much for that. That is one of the reasons that when myself, Melody Hart, and Mike Unger put together that systemic racism is a health crisis, we wanted to do something more than just make it a health crisis. We wanted to do something that was going to be impactful to our city. And that's why we created the task force. And I'm hoping, and I'm quite sure all council was hoping that with this task force, under the leadership of Rhonda Davis and Mario, that we will be able to pull the community together and to put a microscopic look on what is happening in our community to be able to come together and have that dialogue to either fix it or to bring more information to it, to change policies and to get things. And we want the community to definitely be a part of that. And believe me, I understand, I am truly African American. And I have gone through so many different parts of racism in my whole life that you would probably never, ever understand, just as me being an African American. So I can't pass. I'm black. So I'm here and I'm on council. I'm going to make sure those things are pushed and that the community is involved and that we get some type of resolution to things that we need in the African American community. Especially, as you say, you know, I represent all of Cleveland Heights, but I truly believe as a council person, you have to go to the areas that are most distressed. And I live in the area that is most distressed, that is predominantly African American in the Jewish community. And that's where a lot of things are happening or that's what we are hearing. So we need to investigate that and make sure all of those things are true. But believe me, I understand. If you go back and look in the history books of around 1976, Collin Wood, that's me. So no one can understand what racism is like I can understand what racism is. So I am here for you and I understand you 100%. So I welcome all of the community and you too to be a part of the racial task force. Thank you.
Thanks, Davida. Okay, Melody.
Yeah, I just want to say we do have a lot of good things going on. And I think the Racial Justice Task Force is part of that. I think also the work we are having with, with the parks and the great job that Joe McCray does in making sure we have safe recreation. And I want to also praise the staff on the economic development front. We've had issues with economic development, of course, and residents have been very vocal, particularly on Top of the Hill, on Buckingham's raised issues. And whenever I have contacted the city regarding their issues, they rapidly resolve all the issues. And we just got an issue today about cameras in the garage, which I raised economic development. I'm sure they'll resolve that equally as fast because they've been very, very attentive to the residents. And, and I appreciate that we have a very, very responsive staff. Thanks.
Hey, thank you. That's all the hands up that I see. So I'll yield back to Jim.
There's a lot of really good information there. Thanks for sharing it. Mayor Brennan, you're up next.
Very good. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We'll start out by talking a little bit about economic development projects in the City of University Heights, starting with the South Taylor Place condominiums. On February 16th of this year, city council approved the planning commission's recommendation to approve the site plan for South Taylor Place condominiums. And as a result, 30 beautiful new townhomes are set to be built in our city. This is the culmination of nearly three years of work by city administration, the City Beautiful CIC, and city council. Credit and thanks must also go to our friends on the Cleveland Heights University Heights School Board for they to share the vision of what can be with this development. This is the first major multi-unit housing development to be built in University Heights since the late 1970s. And this project will expand our tax base, bring new energy to the Cedar Taylor District, and reinvigorate local businesses. And that is certainly to the benefit of both of our cities. I'll turn now to University Square. Slowly but surely, we're, we're getting there. Despite the pandemic and economic downturn, the University Square redevelopment deal is still alive. Progress continues, thanks to the collective efforts of the developers, the bondholders. Progress continues thanks to the collective efforts of the developers, the bondholders, their trustee, stakeholders, Target Macy's, the county government, and your city government. Phase one of the project, the space between Target and Macy's will be rebuilt as two hundred upscale market rate apartments. This phase will also include live, work, and retail spaces. There may be a dog park, a bocce ball court, a fitness center, and a conference center. Phase two planning would begin after phase one is up and running. Once the developers get a feel for the new development, phase two could feature additional mixed use, including more retail and apartments, entertainment venues, and perhaps senior housing. It serves our community to have a vital and thriving project at the intersection of Cedar and Warrensville Center roads. So we will do everything we can to see this through. We have made progress, but we are not yet done. There is a method to the order in which we are handling redevelopment sites. First, we must resolve University Square before settling on a site for new municipal facilities. To better serve the community, the city government is working on a plan for a new municipal center, including new police and fire stations, service facilities, city administration and meeting rooms, and a year-round community center. We cannot commit to rebuilding where we are or seeking another site for that purpose until we have resolved University Square. Incidentally, the city's strategic planning subcommittee is meeting this Wednesday to discuss facilities issues. The in the University Square project is a giant domino, and once it falls into place, it will set off a chain reaction of projects and progress. And I will add that we are also going out to bid for a comprehensive zoning code update. That zoning code update will not be the vision of any one person, but it will be the collective vision of all of us, all of us in city government, all of us in city council, all of us in the community. The community that we want University Heights to be for decades to come, a sustainable community financially and environmentally. That remains a strong and desirable place to live, a walkable urban suburb that offers the best of big city living balanced with neighborly charm. A diverse and inclusive community that is not only respectful of each other, but celebrates both what we share and what makes us all unique. We must not be afraid to embrace the best of what we are to maximize our potential, to build on where we've always succeeded. We were once the village of Idlewood, but in just four years, twenty twenty five, we will celebrate the one hundredth anniversary of calling ourselves University Heights. We have spent the last three years rebuilding our ties with John Carroll University, embracing our university so that we may grow together and enhance each other rather than act as if we suffer each other's existence. One need look no further than Kent, Ohio, for what a city can do to rebuild itself, embracing what a small city with a university in it can be, not just for the students, but for the benefit of all the residents. It is partly because of John Carroll University that we have the largest population as a percentage of eighteen to thirty-four-year-olds among any community in Cuyahoga County, coming in at thirty-nine point six percent. Young people come here to University Heights and then they stay here, at least for a while. We must build on that strength, harness it, and maximize its potential. We do that by encouraging the entertainment and commercial activity that keeps our community vibrant. Young people are leaving Ohio, and we are an exception here in University Heights. We intend to update our zoning to unleash the development that embraces who we are and make it everything it can be. Like to shift now to summer activities and the pool reopening plans. I heard with much interest about Cumberland, a lot of this will seem somewhat familiar. We announced on Friday the return of our summer parade. Traditionally, we hold the parade on Memorial Day. But to allow a few more weeks of vaccinations and out of hopes of holding something more closely resembling our traditional parade, we will be holding the twenty twenty-one parade on Sunday, July fourth. It will step off at eleven AM, and the rest of the details are fluid as are all things during the pandemic. Anyone interested in participating should email us at info@universityheights.com. While the parade has moved to later in the summer, we do plan to have a ceremony to honor and remember those lost and service to our country on Memorial Day. To allow more time for vaccinations, most of our summer events do not commence until July and then August. The summer concert series will start on July first with the University Heights Symphonic Band and an outdoor showing of Raiders of the Lost Ark. The concert will begin at seven PM at JCU Hamlin Quad. The rest of the concerts will be Thursday evenings, seven PM at Walter Stinson Community Park. Of course, as appropriate and necessary, we will take precautions to encourage and maintain social distance at our free concerts. As someone who grew up around music, listening to music, playing music, being in bands and going to concerts, it means so much to bring live music back to our community. It means not only that summer is back, but it signals the return of culture and the return of the communal experience that concerts bring. Besides the Thursday concerts, other activities at the park this summer beginning in July include Tai Chi on Monday evenings, yoga in the park on Tuesday evenings, and boot camp on Wednesday evenings. And though it is not technically a city event, beginning this weekend, Odd Dog Coffee returns to the Walt on April seventeenth and will be at the park on Saturdays and Sundays from eight AM to two PM. If you haven't been there for a coffee for yourself and a Puppuchino for your dog, then be sure to come on out and treat yourself and treat your dog. Last year, we suspended garage sale permits and block parties. We will resume issuing garage sale permits on June first, and we will accept applications for block parties to be held beginning in July. We are accepting those reservations now. As for the pool, after being closed all of twenty twenty due to the pandemic, the Borough Rothschild Pool at Purvis Park will reopen in twenty twenty-one on Memorial Day weekend. As the pandemic is not over, there will be safety precautions at the pool this year to keep, help keep visitors safe. Capacity will be capped at one hundred ninety-seven visitors at a time. With a limited capacity and in fairness to city residents, the pool will be open only to University Heights residents for this summer. There will be no guest passes. Pool passes will be sold online at universityheights.com. Passes will not be available in person this season. Instead of purchasing the whole season at once, the season will be divided into three sessions. Residents may purchase passes for any or all of the three sessions. Session one is Memorial Day weekend and June. Session two is the month of July, and session three will be August and Labor Day weekend. There will be a reservation system so that residents may visit the pool in approximately three-hour increments. When not in the pool, guests will need to wear a mask until such time that the state mask mandate would be lifted. Pool procedures will be evaluated over the summer and are subject to change depending on changing state and county health regulations. Any changes will be posted on the city website and on the city's social media accounts. And once we make it all the way to the end of the pool season on Labor Day, the day after Labor Day, we will open the pool for one more day so that we can have our second-ever doggy pool party. That's right. Uh the residents may bring their dog to the pool and let them take a dip right before we drain it for the season. Like to shift now to encouraging vaccinations and public safety. We have been sharing vaccination opportunities on social media and through our e-news. Most recently, Julian Rogers, the executive director of Local Government and Community Relations of Case Western Reserve University and somebody I know everybody in Cleveland Heights knows very well, has been kind enough to relay to us when Case Western has its signups. We've also created and released today a PSA, which I'm hoping, I'm hoping I'm gonna be able to show you. I I see a present now button, and if I can do that, I'd like to uh present that um uh that tab right here, so try that. All right. I hope, I hope everybody saw that. I hope I did that right. Wonderful. Thank you. And yes, and Molly correctly pointed out, Jody, Jody Serini from the school board is in that video, so uh you you can view it again um at the city's YouTube channel uh for University Heights. Uh here in the county, the latest uh numbers are that thirty-eight point fifty-five percent or four hundred and seventy-six thousand fifty-nine people have at least had the first uh dose of the of the vaccine. The coordinated response by all levels of government is a night and day difference since uh January twentieth. And let me stop that presentation. Very good. And let me get back over here. Uh finally, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the issue of the bus depot. I planned to bring that up previously. School district and constituent cities need to work together on finding a permanent home to the school bus depot. The school district did obtain pre-COVID and with our support and extension of both the lease of the current temporary site on Mayfield Road in Cleveland Heights as well as an extension of the license for same by the Cleveland Heights Planning Commission. So everyone should be aware, the bus depot was originally at Wiley Middle School, and with Wiley no longer a middle school and with and the site not technically zoned for that purpose, as the city has expressed previously, a permanent site elsewhere for the bus depot should be ascertained. Except for Girity, none of the CHUH schools are physically located in University Heights anymore, and Cleveland Heights is three times the population and four times the land area. A site more centrally located makes better sense. What we don't want to see happen is the Mayfield Road site to cease being an option with no alternative in place. The former Wiley School is not a suitable alternative, as at present, there is nowhere there to park the buses. The bus parking area having been torn out to build the modular classrooms and other additions when Wiley was serving as a swing space. I know that through the pandemic, the Wiley facility uh has been used for educational purposes, and I'm glad the district has had it at its disposal to help carry the district and its students through the pandemic. Ultimately, if and when the time comes that the school district would determine that it no longer has an educational purpose for the Wiley site, uh the city of University Heights is willing to work with the district on the site's redevelopment. Redevelopment keeping the board offices at home and committed to the site is welcome, ideal even. And we believe that the redevelopment options are limited if sixty or more buses also happen to be parked there. I would welcome discussion beyond this meeting to facilitate a solution that serves all stakeholders and ensures an orderly transition to whatever new facility is ultimately determined for the bus depot. Perhaps a special committee or a task force would be helpful. Uh since I do want to end on a more positive note, I'm delighted to announce that I will be making a public comment tomorrow at the state school board meeting in favor of a resolution in support of House Bill One. The Successors School Funding Reform Bill, based on last year's Cut Patterson bill that passed the House but stalled out in the Senate. I won't go over all of my entire comment here, but the school funding reform is critical to our cities from updating the formula for public share to the direct funding voucher programs from the state as opposed to from district budgets. It would bring fairness and relief to our residents while shoring up the funding that our school district needs. So thank you. This concludes our report. And I'm happy to take questions, and certainly there are five members of our council here who may have additions, things that they would also like to say.
I'm also offering my help if you need me to push that as well as uh in Columbus.
Well, thank you, Councilwoman Russell. It is a definitely should be an all-hands-on-deck effort uh for all of our shared constituents.
Just so everybody's aware, uh HB one is um the Cut Patterson legislation that was stalled last year, after it was stalled even a year previous to that, but Matt Dolan, not of Sugar and Falls, essentially stalled it for us last year, saying it needed more study, when in fact, there's been tens, twenty thousand, I mean fifty thousand hours of public testimony already on it. I'm pulling a number out of thin air, but there's gobs and gobs and gobs of public testimony already on it. It's a fair funding uh legislation that actually passed the House um last December uh in a lame duck session uh by something like eighty votes. I mean, it is popular. It's bipartisan. It gives school districts like ours a way to fund ed choice instead of out of a deduction from our budget, which basically takes money away from our kids and gives it to uh you know, private school kids. Uh what it does is it directly funds those outside of our fair, out of our funding formula. Um right now, anybody that uses a voucher, one hundred percent of that money is coming out of our property taxes. Um and it's money that we can't use for our students, which forces us to put more levies on the ballot, which we're doing everything we possibly can to prevent. The latest update we had in our five-year forecast um earlier this month indicates that when we passed our last levy, we promised our community that it would hold for three years. We're now at a point where even with COVID, we're able to get it. We're able to hold it back for four years now. Um and we've made public statements. Jody has been one of these people that has been pushing it. She wants to try to go for a five-year levy cycle. Um I mean, anything that we can to prevent levies. And if you look at the nine million dollars that escapes our budget because of ed choice and the amount of the levies that we ask for, you'll see if there was no ed choice, there would be no school levies. We've got our finances under really, really good control. So I just wanted to make that little statement. So but thank you for testifying, Michael.
Absolutely.
And this is not the first time you've done it for us.
Uh no, no, and and it's something that that I'm committed to keep doing. It's something that's that's to everyone's benefit here. You know, educating all the children is 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 in the public interest. You know, I'm not here to fight against vouchers, far from it, but what we need to do is shore up is is shore up this this state program with with direct funding from the state so that um we then in turn shore up our public schools, so that our public schools be the solid option that they that they really are and ought to be. And 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 I am uh absolutely committed to to assisting in any way I can to help make that happen.
And I think I'll put together a resolution in support of that at our council and maybe to encourage other uh council members in different cities to also put a resolution to support that effort as well.
Thank you.
Anything else from University Heights? Nancy, you want to uh talk to us?
Um very hard to follow Mayor Brennan because he's such a wonderful speaker. And I'm just a soul little librarian.
Nancy, you can.
Well, I'll do the best I can. Um I do wish to thank the mayor uh for working with us on a number of summer activities in the Walt. Um we've been doing storytimes there and we're going to be placing a story walk in in the park, and we're very excited about that. I'm not gonna speak too much on all of the things we've been doing to support the community during COVID, although there are oodles and oodles of them. Um I really want to speak about today and the future. We um will be back to our normal hours on May tenth. And we, like other community um facilities, will enforce the mask mandate in our buildings, and if people find that that it's hard for them to do for health reasons or any other reason, we'll be happy to serve you at curbside or um make another accommodation. But we're sticking with the mask for the time being. And um we just want to make that clear. We also have available COVID test kits that were given to us from the state, and um they are easily um picked up through our circulation department. We have hundreds and hundreds of them, so if anyone needs one for, say, to fly safely to show that you are negative or to go back to work, um that is why they gave them to the library so that we could make sure that anyone who needed a test could get one now. Um and I believe they are still coming, and uh I don't see an end in sight for that for the time being. So let's talk about a couple of great things that are happening at the library. Um we are very excited to say that we bought the Noble Presbyterian Church. We will close on um April thirtieth. Yay, I know, it's been really hard not to talk about it. Um and we're very excited, and we know that people have lots of questions for us about what's gonna happen to the buildings together and separately, and we just don't know yet. We are about to embark on a a serious building assessment. We'll look at all of the pros and cons. And more importantly, I guess, for the community is that we're starting a visioning process. Um I have a meeting tomorrow to kick that off with Bostwick Design, a local architecture firm. And we will be led by our friend, uh Rick Ortmeier, who is a Cleveland Heights resident and has worked on at least twenty-six other library construction projects, really knows his stuff, and really knows his stuff, and he was on the library board, so he understands how libraries work. Um and he's very thoughtful and um engaging, and he will make sure that that the whole community is heard during this process. And we're still in the what do you want to see in the building um phase. So if anyone has any ideas, we're very interested in hearing from the school district. Um I've been talking to Patrick Carpenter and um and all of the residents to find out what they'd like to see in that building. We have a great opportunity here to improve um computer services in the northern part of the city. And um also with expanded rooms, we will have meeting rooms, which means we can have all kinds of programs and gatherings and um community events inside and outside on that property. So we're really, really excited. And we would like to ask for a little bit of help from the school district and the city because our vision includes um closing off the Brew Street at Montevista going into Noble. And if I can share, I have a very low-key drawing. Um, how do I do that?
There's a present now.
Oh, I see.
You're right. And then it's going to ask, you want to share a tab or your whole display?
Okay, then let me go to ah. That, no. Sorry.
Nancy, sometimes there's a little, there's a little lag between when you click it and it actually happens.
There we go. Can you, anyone see this? It says possible reconfiguration.
No, not yet.
Okay. Well, the idea is to um close off Montevista at Noble so that there is a green bridge between the library and the elementary school. And that space could be um enhanced a little bit, so it becomes a little outdoor gathering place. Um, the city has turned many streets into dead ends this way. I can think of Talomar and um Washington Boulevard as two examples. And um there are only about three or four houses that this would affect um that are right across the street from the school. And many of the residents that I've spoken to have already said that would be great because it would calm the traffic. Um, can you see it yet?
No.
No. Oh, darn. Okay, well, I'm going to go back to the meeting then. Use your imagination. Um, so I have spoken to
It's up now.
We can see it.
Yeah, Nancy, I'm showing it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Um so you can see that the parking lot for the school is there, and then there's a lot of grass. And um we're hoping that maybe we can at least go as far as the driveway into the parking lot or even think of it in a little more um creative way so that we can have a green park, narrow strip of a park between um the elementary school and the library property, which is then the whole next block because of the church. And that, continuing that green space along two blocks could be a really gorgeous way to enter the Noble neighborhood from Mayfield Road, which is one of its terminus. So um we don't know anything more than that as far as what we're planning, but I spoke to Eric Zamp today, and he said, you know, get it drawn up, let's bring it to the city, and let's see where we can go from there. Um but I believe this would be very well supported by the community, certainly by the families at the school, because it is a very dangerous corner. People turn left um from Noble and right from Noble onto Montevista, and they're usually traveling pretty quickly. Um and we could enhance the corridor as is discussed in the Noble Corridor Study prepared by Future Heights. And um it meets about ten of the talking points that they're looking for in the Noble Corridor. So um we hope that you'll just consider that. Again, it's it's an idea, it's nothing more than an idea. But um we believe that while we enhance the area with a beautiful building, this added green space and gathering space could be a really nice addition. It might also encourage some economic development across the street where um the the stores come and go, and it hasn't been very uh very consistent. Cahill, I see that you raised your hand. Do you want to ask a question now? Cahill, did you want to ask a question?
Well, actually, you know, I I I did want to make a comment and and ask a question, I guess. I you when we talked about this a while back. Um I mean, I've already let you know I'm fully in favor of this plan. I think that it's marvelous. But um I wanted to know exactly what the city needs to do sort of functionally in order to make it happen. Um is this something that obviously would council need to pass something to allow for um this change to to take place? And I I just want to reiterate the safety concern, you know, kids aren't always so diligent about looking both ways before they run into the street. Um, you know, out of that parking lot or from the playground. And so I just wanted to to keep that on everybody's mind as we consider this decision as well.
Thank you, Cahill. Um I did ask Eric what would need to do, and he said draw it into a drawing and come to city council and um probably have to go through ABR or zoning or both. Um and I think that my discussions with Future Heights said they would support some kind of plan there. So I think we just need to bring the idea into more of a solid vision and um hopefully get it to you in the next six months, something like that. But thank you. I really appreciate that. Um, so that brings us to a perfect opportunity to partner on a relatively simple project, although nothing is simple. Um, however, I would like to sort of expand that idea into the idea that was brought to us at our last joint boards meeting, which was um attended by the mayor of Shaker Heights, who discussed the Forward Together initiative that's going on between the schools, the library, and the city in Shaker. Um tonight, we've mentioned the bus terminal, we've mentioned a little bit about infrastructure. I know that um we have talked to the city of University Heights about having electric charging stations, and it was just too big of a project for the library to kind of muscle on its own. I think, I hope that tonight's meeting, which I really appreciate Jim pushing to have, um will bring us together more often, at least on a facilities level. I think since we're all taxing authorities, we need, we owe it to the community to um try to be as good with our with our spending as we can and plan together so that we're not doing an undoing and um maybe uh just maybe there's something that we can do in the library that would help out in the neighborhood in Noble, and maybe that would be a city thing. And just like we have the SBDC at the Lee Road Library, wouldn't it be nice if somehow in the in the planning of our facilities, we all thought about what the other entities might need? So um I am just putting in a plug for Forward Together in whatever uh way that works for Cleveland Heights and University Heights. And um I do want to thank in the last, I would say in the last two weeks, the library has spoken to Jill McCray, Nancy Pepler, Brian Anderson, Eric Zamp, the mayor, uh Dylan Brennan, Mike Cook, uh the school board, Pat uh Patrick Carpenter. We are working all of you and we love it, and um we can, none of us can really exist without the other. Um at least in some ways, you probably think you could all do without the library, but we can't do without you. Um so um I guess as the smallest little ant on the hill, I'm just saying, wouldn't it be cool if we kept doing this more often and at least had some sort of infrastructure discussions, maybe offline, and um tried to coordinate what we were doing? Um, there is stuff going on in other places in the library. We are just kicking off our fundraising for the planning portion of the Coventry Peace Playground. We celebrated the Library Day of Giving on um the seventh of April, and many of you donated. Um and that I am so, so grateful. We surpassed our goal. And um I've spoken because of that day to a couple of other funders that might be able to step forward. We've approached the Cleveland Foundation and they're helping us with advice at least. Um and hopefully later on, when we get to really building the playground, we'll have more to say. We are um bringing a proposal to the library board for consultants to do the planning and the visioning on that project. And um we are also building out the meeting rooms at the Coventry Branch Library, so that will be available for public use very soon. And um also improving their HVAC, which couldn't have happened sooner um with the COVID uh worries with ventilation. We're very happy to get that done. So that's it from from me for now, but um I I do appreciate all of the help you've given us. And we got through this year. I don't know how we did it, but we're we're looking at the the lighter side of it, and I hope that that will mean that we'll just explode with all sorts of great things.
Nancy, I want to thank you so very much because, you know, Noble has been my pet peeve. And I am just so excited about uh what you're doing there. But you know, we keep missing each other, and we really have to sit down and have coffee because I think I ha- I think I have some help for you. And that's what I've been trying to relay to you. I think I have some great help that will uh can help you with that library, so please reach out to me.
Yes, ma'am. I will. I'll come to you, sit on your front porch.
Yes, that that'd be nice. We can have coffee on the por- porch.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to respond to the uh Forward Together work that Shaker is doing. Um, I think, as you may realize, my wife's the city planning director in Shaker, and she's leading it from the Shaker perspective. So I'm pretty familiar from what she can tell me about what's going on. Um, but putting together a group like that, I mean, there's, there's a lot of value, Nancy. You're you're absolutely right um on how we can make sure that we're working better together um as opposed to independently. Um, what I'd like to propose is a meeting amongst our leadership um of our school district, um Cleveland Heights, University Heights, and the library, just to have just a preliminary conversation um on what that would look like. Um, you know, one of the things I am a little bit concerned about from the school district perspective, um COVID has really, really hurt us and hurt our kids. Um if you just look at the grade levels that our kids are at, um it's not like it was last year. Um, we have a significant uh deficit of education that we need to get back in these kids. Um and our school district is really stepping up this whole summer school thing. I mean, we don't really do summer school. It's basically typically credit recovery. This is an intense major investment to open up our schools for all the kids that need it. And it's going to be required for some kids. Um, and it's going to be optional for others. Um, so this is work that we're doing. Um, and we're trying to really focus on this. This is as um uh Ms. Kirby said, this is the fifth educational, um I don't want to say program, com- completely re-engineering what we do the fifth time over. Um, it's been a very, very challenging year for staff. Um, so but I think I see the end of the tunnel. Um, we have key facilities decisions that we have to make as a school district. The bus depot is one of them um and others. Um, but let's talk amongst the leaders and just see if we can, you know, maybe figure something out. Um, and what I'll do is I'll reach out to everybody, just, I mean, just to sort of see what we can do um to kind of get that coordinated uh in the near term.
Yeah. Um, that would be fantastic. I know you've all mentioned broadband in one way or another. That's very important to our community. I've been um approached by people who are interested in municipal Wi-Fi. Again, I don't have the ability as a library director to do anything about that, be a fan. Um but but um solar power, Cahill mentioned to me the other day, um electric charging stations, all sorts of things, even dog parks. You know, there was someone was asking in the library if we could have a dog park. Well, that's not our thing, but it might be might be in University Heights. So um we do need to rate. It would just help us all, and it would be worth the time to carve out and spend to meet. Um and I think, you know, none of us wants to be caught off guard by anything that could be a surprise later on. And um, you know, I don't need to say anymore.
I if if I may, I'd like to echo the things that 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 Jim Posh said about, you know, getting together as uh, you know, as leaders and meeting, and and certainly I'd be willing to to be a part of that. I I also want to take a moment to to acknowledge and 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 celebrate the, you know, relationship that our city has with our 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 shared library system. And that uh, you you know, when when the University Heights uh library reopened at the end of twenty seventeen, and it was, it's was and still is, you know, beautifully revisioned facility uh with its uh shared conference rooms and and then the much more open uh plan. Um, it is uh, you know, it's it's nice to be able to return the favor, you know, that 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 that, you you know, the the library has been the home of senior happenings um with with Walter Stinson. Mr. Stinson did retire um uh last month, and and he will not be back uh for senior happenings uh when we are able to resume it. The city is still, of course, committed to doing that event when the library is ready to pick that up. We have spoken with Sarah Phillips about it, and we are doing that in uh probably beginning in September. Uh and uh just to begin with, existing staff at City Hall will will take the place of of Mr. Stinson, at least initially. Um, but from there, from there, the fact that Storytime in the park and 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 things that we, the fact that we've been able to make Walter Stinson Community Park available to to the library for events in in the outdoors. Uh when, you you know, leading up to the pandemic, the library's been so open and welcoming to to the community, to our city, to to the city government, to to city activities. And 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 that for us to be able to do that back for the library for a time. Also, I I gotta say the how very excited I am for the Noble neighborhood that 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 this development is happening uh with the library and and the church. And um yeah, when I was on Future Heights Board, you know, the Noble neighborhood was something that I felt needed a lot more attention, deserved a lot more attention, has so much potential. And and to see this sort of thing happening is is just a wonderful thing, wonderful thing. It's it's great for not just the Noble neighborhood, it's great for all the Heights. So good work on that and very excited to see where that goes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mayor Brennan, uh Mayor Stein, Nancy, do you guys have any additional closing comments to make? We're at nine oh five and I think the meeting's almost over.
No, thank you so much. I've been waiting for this meeting. We're really excited about all the things we can do together.
Yes, thank you, and looking forward to doing this again sooner rather than later and making this a regular part of of uh our relationship. Thank you for hosting tonight.
Thank you. It was an informative night. Thank you very much.
So we, as a school district, we have to um, I need a motion to adjourn.
But before we adjourn, Jim, I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Um, I I wanted to add before we leave, since we have, you know, two of the mayors here and all these civic leaders, Ms. Russell, I speci- uh particularly thank you for your comments and uh my other board members, Max and Gabe. Um, I want to speak uh just for a moment on the George Florrie twa- trial and on the um Mayor Stein, when you answered one of the questions, and I believe you spoke on the racial justice task force. Is that the name of the task force?
Yep. Yes, the Racial Justice Task Force.
Right. And you spoke along the lines of a two-year timeframe. And I think what Gabe gave, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But you know, as we go through all of this, because it does in particular But you know, as we go through all of this, because it does in particular mean something, you know, to our families, to our children's brothers, sisters, et cetera, that seems especially long. And that's not to say that that work doesn't have to be done and that we're not giving some kudos to that being formed. And going to do the paperwork and the research it needs to do to give us feedback. But I would challenge each person here in our organizations and our leadership to move a little more swiftly on things that can be done and are progressive and tangible in reference to better serving BIPOC though. That's the black indigenous and people of color communities. There are things that are not going right in everywhere across America and, and Cleveland Heights and University Heights as well, excuse me. And I, I didn't like the sound of that slow walking as we step away from here. That that was kind of like the only addressing. So yeah, we can pat ourselves on the backs and say we're doing some things and we're getting some things done. But today, right now, for myself is very stressful. For my family is very stressful. For my two sons, it's a little more stressful. We need to get some work done, some tangible things that we're talking about, you know, by August or by next year or a week from now or whatever that we're doing to service the BIPOC community and the things that affect us. So whether it's the small business loan, a certain portion set aside for us, whether it's something being done in homeownership, whether it's the need to have these things addressed in our school district. You only spoke briefly in reference to the curfew. So I wanted to bring that back up because so often, you know, we do our meetings and we're doing this and we are getting a lot done and it's important. But what about this one thing that's super important to me? And so I want to end, I'm going to go away from my video because I want to quote RFK on this particular issue and what I think, you know, maybe we can have on our minds. He, he said, to say that the future will be different from the present is to scientists hopelessly self-evident. I observe regretfully that in politics, however, it can be heresy. It can be denounced as radicalism or branded as subversion. There are people in every time and every land who want to stop history in its tracks. They feel the future, they fear the future, mistrust the present and invoke the security of a comfortable past, in fact, that never existed. As long as I'm on council, I promise you, I will make that task force move forward with all the help of my council members. You have that as my promise.
And Dana, I, I don't want you or anyone listening to think that Cleveland Heights is slow walking it. It's that's the farthest thing from the truth. Our previous city manager, Tisha Riley, began and hired Cleveland State University professor, Mr. Dunn, a professor Dunn to assist our Cleveland Heights Police Department in doing a total review and, and many times reform of its policies, procedures, educational activities and the such. And the chief isn't here right now to talk about that. And I wish he was because there is on, on the Cleveland Heights Police Department webpage, literally a number of, of webpages with a lot of documentation about the research that's going on right now. And the changes that have already been implemented. And there's been a lot of policy, procedure, educational changes that have already taken place without the task force even convening yet. But that was the one part, that was part that we can control right now. We said we have to make some changes right now. And the chief and with Dr. Dunn, they have begun making those changes already. So I don't want you to think that, you know, we're slow walking it. It's the Racial Justice Task Force. That's where the community involvement is going to come in. And they're going to look at everything that the police department and Dr. Dunn and his department at Cleveland State University has presented already, the changes that were made and they're going to review it again and see if maybe some more changes need to be made. But we're not slow walking it. Again, things are happening right now and continue. Our contract with Cleveland State is not up yet. There's still more training going. There's still more personnel development going on and policies and procedures still being rewritten and implemented as we speak.
And, and this is why we're having these two police forums. So the community can respond to the information and that we can absorb that and work with Dr. Dunn and the police department to make some changes internally. So the one tomorrow night and the one two weeks after that, those are important. Those are outreach forums to the public.
And I appreciate what you guys are saying and thank all three of you, but I haven't heard about the forum. So I would challenge you once again, where's this information? Put it out there. Because here I said, my library hasn't, has, has, have we posted it, et cetera. Look, it's not an indictment and I'm simply making a statement. I appreciate each of the responses. I just felt it need to be duly said. And on the record, and Mayor Stein, if you could please share with us those things, if the gentleman was here, might some of the things he might share with us. I'd appreciate it. I'd like to hear and I'd like to know that all the work isn't down the road. But thank you. And, and I certainly appreciate that from all three of you.
When we get together as leaders, which I suggested earlier regarding the facilities, I think it makes sense for us to add a racial justice agenda item on there. There, there's so much interconnectivity in how we work with our local police force, how our security is conducted and how that dovetails into our racial equity policy. Cleveland Heights was the first school district and I want to say east of the Mississippi that had a racial equity policy passed. And our work is not even close to being done and just trying to implement that. It is, it is a lot of work. It's changing paradigms. It's changing mindsets. It's so much more difficult than I ever would have ever imagined. But it takes a team and a large community of interested parties to make it happen. So Dana, thank you very much for your comments and escalating this item. It's important.
Thank you, Dana. Thank you very much.
I would like a motion to adjourn. Is that all right?
I would like to motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Gaynor, would you call the roll? Oh, we need a second. Okay, I heard a second somewhere out there. Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Yes, thank you, everyone.
Ms. Serini.
Yes, thanks, everyone.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes, thank you and good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for, thanks for showing up. We had great attendance this evening. We need to do more of these.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Thank you, everyone.
Take care, be safe.